Now we're recording.
Now you're recording.
Okay, a call a meeting to order at five thirty. Update the agenda, anything to update? Any public comments?
No public.
Nothing here.
I guess it's gonna be Allison now from the NVDA.
Hi.
Hi.
So, um, when I last checked the survey, we had ninety-nine responses. Um, and I'm wondering if there are paper copies and how I can get them.
I can scan into, I have three here. I don't know if there's anything in the library because the library's not open today. So I don't know if they have anything down there, but we have three up here in town hall.
Okay, didn't we, I think we gave people till the end of the month, is that right?
We were just discussing that. I think that's what you decided.
That was at the end of the month.
Yeah, let me, let me look at my visuals and see what I said. I think it was the thirtieth. But it would be nice to, at least if there are any massive ones laying about. Thirtieth. So, so ninety-nine is pretty good. Um, did you want us to get a preview of how people are responding?
Sure.
Sure, that'd be nice.
Okay.
We're getting up, we will get the Pizza Hut McDonald's if this one wanted.
Pardon?
The, the one here wants a Pizza Hut and a McDonald's in town.
Yeah, I know. There was somebody, I think it wanted a Wendy's or something.
What is wrong with you people? The correct answer is Taco Bell.
And Kentucky Fried, together.
How about Domino's? Well, actually Pizza Hut is part of that.
Um, it was, I think, oh, a hundred and one responses, we're over the mark.
Taco Huts.
Yes. Are you, are you able to, do you want to share? Are you able to share?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I didn't add just, oh, okay.
So can you see this?
Yep.
Okay, um, surprising number of second homeowners. That's, this is a hundred and one responses. Um, most people own. I don't know what that, uh, family owned, what that one is. Um, only four people who own a short-term rental. Some people, only four people between the ages of nineteen and thirty-five. Uh, almost twenty percent age seventy and up. Twenty, uh, almost twenty-four percent to, uh, to, um, between thirty-five and fifty. More than half between fif- fifty-one and sixty-nine. Eleven respondents with school-aged children. Most people in Island Pond. Uh, almost forty percent elsewhere. Um, sixteen come in daily to do shopping. Thirteen come in daily to do work. Most of the bulk of respondents come into the village, um, a few times a week. Except for dining and entertainment. Um, this one is all open-ended responses. Um, what I got from this one is we're gonna have to do some, um, consolidation, but a lot of people go to New Hampshire, either Colbrook or Littleton. Um, most people don't own a business. What, about five people own businesses elsewhere in Brighton. Who is that? Six people on a business in Island Pond. Um, three people are looking financing at assistance to support or open a business. Um, assistance to build a workshop, a grant. Um, I don't think they make it. Restaurants, what they want to see, businesses that they want to see, grocery and gas, manufacturing, restaurants and a Walmart, general store. Um, restaurants, community recreation, farmer's market. Pharmacy diner, more restaurants, restaurants. Um, ones that don't revolve strictly around. Some coffee shops, camping supplies, more restaurants. I think we're gonna see a lot of restaurants here. Dining. A lot of people want food and dining.
Five of them in town. I don't know how many more we can support.
Well, people like dining.
Half of them, as half of it is.
I know.
Um, sometimes when you, you have a bunch of restaurants, it, it gives people so many choices that it even draws more people. But this is what people said. Um, thoughts about the, um, local economy? There were, there were a, um, a couple of comments on the tax assessment. And I think that when we plan our, um, our meetings or workshops, we should be prepared to have some answers and information on that so that discussions don't get derailed. Um, housing costs, um, most, most people, like nearly half say feel that it's within their budget. And another half occasionally has a strain on their budget. What I thought it was interesting about a third intend on making major repairs or renovations to their homes in the next three years. Big, be a single cost driver of their housing or taxes. Um, and most people were not interested in creating an apartment, but with fourteen people kind of interested? That's something. I didn't expect everybody to say, yeah, sign me up. It's not for everybody. Um, nearly, just under half expect, those people who are live here year-round expect to be in the same residence in the next decade. Um, frequent cycling, walking, walking, jogging, running, kayaking and boating tend to be the snowmobiling. Um, leaf peeping. It's funny that leaf peeping, running, jogging and walking were higher than, um, snowmobiling. Um, I'm not gonna go through all of like the open-ended responses. Um, the visions. A vibrant downtown that offers residents and visitors alike multiple opportunities to shop, socialize and recreate. Um, the thirty-five ranked this the highest. A shining example of stewardship of the lake. Forty-two, so that that was most important. Um, a destin- a destination with year-round recreation opportunities are accessible and affordable to residents and visitors alike. Community that cares, twenty-eight percent, twenty-eight respondents. Um, so those were like the, the top ones. Safe place for walkers, cyclists and people who cannot or do not want to drive. A place where seniors can safely age in place. So this one might be, um, best, um, demonstrated by, once we get all of our answers in, by ranking those with the highest. But I think it's, you know, the downtown destination, the recreation destination, safe for walkers and cyclists seem to be ranking the highest right now. Um, I'm not going to get into there, you know, again of the, there's, you know, and again, this, you know, it don't tax me out of my home. And I think somehow people have, um, have a sense that we're setting the taxes and, um, you know, I, I'm pretty sure that the tax hike was related to education, so.
Well, there's that and we just did our reappraisal as well. So that's hot on everybody's mind right now.
Yeah. Um, well, the other thing is this, every, if everybody's appraisals go up, the tax rate doesn't necessarily go up.
Now, with some of those second homeowners got lots of increases because the, there was, there was a big equalization that happened as part of this reassessment.
Yeah. So, um, I think the bottom line is whatever we plan to do for these outreach activities, when we present this, um, data, we should plan to have some information on the ready to show, I just, just to keep us from, keep us focused on the things that, um, we can control.
So a little report on the, how, how the reappraisal affects people, maybe just a single page. Numbers on there.
Yeah.
We've done that before.
Otherwise, I think that, um, we do have a, have a, a risk of getting sidelined from any more productive conversations about vision statements or housing opportunities or economic development.
I think it sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
Well, how do you tell people there's no money though?
What do you mean?
These projects cost money. My taxes have tripled. You're gonna tell me you don't have money for projects?
The town's budget didn't change. Is the thing. The town didn't collect one dime more after the reappraisal than they did before they reappraised. Our budget was set last March, so we didn't collect another dime.
Oh, so there's no money for projects then?
Well, there wasn't before. I mean, they're all, it's, it's kind of how all projects work.
Perception. People get touchy about dollars.
We typically have to borrow money if we have a big project. We don't, we don't, you know, we borrow what we don't, what we can't raise locally. The wastewater saving facility is an example. We, our local commitment is, you know, I don't know, a million and a half or something like that, but it's a, you know, nine million dollar project, so we have to get the money elsewhere.
So the other thing is that we have two workshops. One is about housing. And one is about economic development. And the workshop about housing can, um, focus on the programs and resources that are available to encourage housing for, um, the opportunities that you have to pursue a tier-one B designation and what that might mean for Act Two Fifty. The other thing is that we could talk about tax credits that are available for fit-up for income-producing properties. And we could, um, provide some examples from um, other housing projects that have, they're generally small and incremental, but they have benefited from the tax credits. We can also show where that designation area is going to be, how far it's going to extend. We can talk about programs like Vermont Housing Improvement Program, which provides combinations of grants and loans directly to private property owners who want to create, um, fair, fair market rate housing opportunities. And, and again, we could provide some examples. And then we could also present, um, images and conceptual plans of the kinds of housing typologies that we believe would fit in with the downtown, um, landscape. And none of those things are warned items, budget items on a town meeting agenda. They're just identifying all the tools in the toolbox and opportunities that are available to the community if you're pursuing tier-one B designation. So, and then similarly for, um, economic development, we can provide feedback on the kind of economic development that people are looking for as well as the programs that are out there that can already support them. So, and again, we can have panelists, um, speak on, on behalf of that. So again, we're not, we're not proposing things that are gonna be warned at town meeting day for budget items. It's more of, this is, this is what we heard from you and this, now, now we're taking, taking inventory of all of the tools available to us. And this is how we think we, we, you know, this is how we can steer the ship in the direction that you want it to go. Does that make sense?
Does to me.
Yep.
Yep. As long as you're available to make those presentations.
I, I am. I'm not going to be like, uh, like a panelist or a developer. I, um, and I think that we had put in our budget, um, a couple of different panelists who could speak about housing development. Um, and so that, that would be the idea.
Now, will they give people a, uh, idea of where they can go get loans to buy homes?
To, um, to invest in their homes in order to create housing opportunities? That's what the whole, um, like the workshop would be about. Like, we would have somebody who could speak about Vermont Housing Improvement Program. We could speak about tax credits. You know, all of the, like, we-
About the, where, we'll say I wanted to go buy a house.
Uh-huh.
And live in a single dwelling. Will they give any, will they give any, uh, programs, information on programs to do that?
Um, I think that there are some programs available through, um, neigh- uh, is it, uh, neighbor?
I don't too regularly, it is.
Neighbor Works.
Yeah, Neighbor Works and first-time home buyers. I mean, we could include that as part of our toolbox.
Yeah.
That's a good suggestion.
GI loans.
Um, there are also, um, there are assistance out there in terms of weatherization and home improvements. And we should take inventory of those as well. Um, like Heat Squad in Nito. And, you know, because people, uh, we did have a certain number of people say that heating, um, was a caught, you know, was, was driving their housing costs, so.
Did we talk about Arby's?
Arby's?
R, R B E S for residential building standards that zoning people are supposed to hand out to everybody. Energy standards. You're supposed to hand one of these out with everybody's zoning permit?
Well, you're supposed to hand them out and then there's, if you record, uh, if you have a certificate of occupancy, then you're supposed to, it's a self-certifying thing and you're just supposed to record a copy of the certificate.
Cool.
But, uh, it is self-certifying.
Yeah.
Who's responsible for that certificate? Completing it and getting-
The applicant. It's self-certifying. So-
Contractor.
Um, the, it would be, it's, it's basically whoever applied for it would, is supposed to bring a copy of their certificate and says, yes, we built it to this specification. Um, it's not like somebody goes out and inspects it.
Well, then I'm gonna write-
Do you require certificates of occupancy for everything?
We, we do. I'm not sure what all the details are on it that, that people certify. We just, we had, historically, we just have not, even though the bylaw asked for them, it wasn't until the last ten years maybe that we started actually issuing them.
Yeah.
But we don't actually go and inspect the property usually, you know. It's something that we're gonna have to actually change, I believe, and get a little bit more strict on that.
Yeah.
The problem is that it's up to the applicant to apply, and if they don't apply, we don't have a system to check whether they've applied or not. And then it only comes up when the title search comes around, you know, and they, they call up and say, I need a C O.
Yeah.
And then you, then, then you only hope that they built what they said they were gonna build.
Yeah. I mean, it might be, um, something to look at internally, um, with, with the zoning administrator. I don't know if that would be helpful to bring up at the housing meeting though. I think it might take us away from, you know, more of like the visionary aspect. Um, don't, you, you have a, a part-time zoning administrator?
Yeah, Nick Catridge, you're, you're recommended in.
Yeah, yeah. Well, um, he can, we can, he can also reach out to the zoning listserv for ideas on what other people do for process. And people are super responsive on that listserv. So, um, this is what I have so far. I'm gonna stop sharing because I can't really see anybody. Yeah. Um, this is what I have so far. Uh, the other thing, I mean, I, I, do we want to do the economic development meeting first? And then the housing one? I mean, how do we want to do that?
It's you guys. You're the planning commission. I'm not, I'm not planning commission.
Play as fast as I'm concerned.
Probably the housing one first.
Okay. Because we did have, um, we wanted to have a, a community walk where, that was part of the scope of work, where we just walk downtown and we identify certain housing typologies that would probably, when I mean types, that would work for the community. Um, and it would be great to try to, you know, do that before the snow flies. Like maybe in an afternoon before your meeting. Um, I don't know what your schedules are like.
Is this something that public's invited to, to as well? Are we making a special effort to have the public invited or is this mostly for our benefit or?
Well, you're gonna, if, if you're gonna be a quorum, you're gonna have to warn it anyway.
Right.
So technically it is a public thing.
Right, I was just wondering whether we want to get, do, take special steps to get the, more people from the public to attend or whether this is for the benefit of the planning commission mostly.
Yeah, um, if we did that, how many people do you think we would get? And who would we get?
Half a dozen. Yeah, I mean, we, we've done some of these community walks before and yeah, it's never, we've never had more than a dozen people total and most of them are either on the board or on some other board, so.
It's fine.
I mean, we don't, we don't make a, we won't make a hard, really intense advertisement, but if we post it around town that the public's invited, you know, just so they-
No.
This, the, the housing thing. I, I see, I see Burlington. They, they seem to be successful in what they've been doing as far as being able to build some housing, uh, low-cost housing. Um, in the Northeast Kingdom, I mean, we, we got the, the city of Newport, who's got a hole in their main street that's been there now for ten years. And nothing, nothing seems to be moving there. I mean, well, how, how are we going to differentiate ourselves? Uh, when they've got a perfectly good spot to build something and, and yet nothing's happening? And, and we have a, a, a ma- a main street, I call it main street. Uh, cr- uh, cross street here, Derby Street, whatever you want to call it. And, and it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem to move too much, but uh, what, I mean, it, it's nice to be talking about all this stuff and I, and I agree with, you know, we need to be doing something, but I, I don't see some of the communities here in, in the north being able, except for Burlington and Winuski area. I, I don't see others, I may be wrong. Uh, I don't, I don't see things progressing in, in the past ten years. That, that, we're, we're lacking something here and, and is, and is it because the money situation? It certainly isn't because, no, Newport doesn't have any empty spaces to put something because they got a perfect space right there. And, and downtown Newport, the, the, the big hole left over from the, uh, the big fraud thing of JP. Uh, and I just, if they can't do it there, how can we do it here? What do we, what do we have to do to make ourselves look better to being able to draw something in here? And, and that's, that's, maybe I'm talking, I'm, I'm not making any sense, but I, 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 it's nice to have vision and I agree, we should have vision. But I don't see anything that we can apply to make that vision successful. I mean, you can try to give all these grants and half the people don't even know the grants are there. I mean, it's gonna be nice that we're gonna find out that at the, at these meetings. But I, I, ma- maybe I, I'm looking at this the wrong way. I just, I just wanted to put that out there because-
No, I, I understand your frustration, but I think, um, you, the thing is with, with planning for a- any community for planning for creating housing, um, you have to make, I think the number one thing is to make sure that you're not, you don't have barriers, unnecessary barriers. So, um, early on when we talked about doing this, we talked about identifying a couple of key spaces in, um, in and around the downtown. Um, either, you know, for, worthy of reinvestment or that could be redeveloped. And then we also wanted to take a hard look at the zoning and to make sure that their regulations that they're not, they're not creating an unnecessary barrier.
And all that stuff has to be in place for this stuff to be successful.
Exactly, and-
That I understand.
And for you to amend your zoning and, um, to pursue, if you, if you really did want like tier-one B status, um, for, um, to, you know, to eliminate the, um, Act Two Fifty expense. Um, anything that, you, you know, your regulatory changes, like you would have to make changes to your zoning bylaw, you would have to consider, you know, would have to adopt subdivision regs. All of those things would have to be consistent with your town plan. And so that's what we're trying to do here is establish the framework for action. I mean, when you make regular, regulatory changes, you are supposed to be consistent with the vision and the intent of the town plan.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why we're taking this effort.
Yeah.
It's, it's, we're not waving, we're not waving a magic wand, but the other thing is that, um, people tend to think about housing in terms of really big projects like the hole in Newport. And it's also possible to pursue it incrementally. Like in, improving building stock, one, one structure at a time. Um, creating an atmosphere that encourages it, makes it easier for the property owner. Um, those, those are things that we, we can do and encourage in the town plan.
So in the town plan, when we're looking at, let's say, an investor that wants to come in here and, and spend five million dollars, uh, to put in a ten-unit or a twelve-unit space, let's say, let's say, one-bedroom, two-bedroom apartments, which would be great to have. Should we as a town start thinking about giving these and- Should we, as a town, start thinking about giving these investors some tax credits of some type? So that they'd only have to pay so much tax for the next five years after the thing has been built. I mean, a lot of communities elsewhere do this.
You're getting way ahead of yourself, we we've done that with, we did that with Ethan Allen, and that's always on the option, that's always on the table, but we don't have anybody right now that's asking for it, but. Yeah, no, that's a perfectly good tool, I I'm glad you brought it up. Tax, yeah, tax relief, we, tax stabilization. You give somebody a lower tax rate for the first year, and then the second year, it's a little bit higher, and the third year.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of communities do that, seems to work.
That would be part of what I think we should bring up at whatever meeting we talk about.
So so the other thing that I was noticing in the survey responses is that. People were focused on um, improving the existing housing stock, rather than focusing on just building one big new thing. That's going to solve the housing crisis. So, um, I think it does make sense to look at like incrementally, like. How many, like, if you if you looked at an investment property, how many units do you think you could? Could get out of it, you know, what kind of investment would be needed, how would the parking be handled? You know, tho- those are things that uh, we could start taking stock in as well. Um, there's a a project called the Homes For All Toolkit. Where um, that was tested in other communities where. Uh, groups, small groups of people went out and identified redevelopment opportunities, and these were all incremental. They were like three, four units, um, may maybe up to five or six units, but then, then they identified like. How they would fit in with with the local streetscape. And how, you know, how and how they could be permitted locally. And if they couldn't be, what would they have to change? And so it's 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 a smaller step, it's not saying, you know, let's let's build a four-story block. It would be great if we if we had like, you know, Bennington Bennington Block or something like that. But um, I think it's also possible to just look at Island Pond, like. You know, at a neighborhood level. And that's what I was hoping the street, the walk would do.
I think municipal change change comes in blocks of five-year periods. Takes five, you get so many different things done, you know, it's takes time, I mean, you can't. Things don't happen overnight.
No, they never do, but um, you have to start somewhere.
Yep, that's right.
And art articulate what you want in the plan and and also take charge of of the tools that. That the ones that you know you have can help make it happen.
Where are we building these houses?
In Island Pond. And and I'm also, what I'm hearing from people from, at least from the survey responses. Is to re- renovate and rehabilitate existing structures. Um, and I am seeing. The incentive would be exactly what we talked about, like. Tax credits, assistance from the Vermont Housing Improvement Program. And also, um, it would be, in some cases, exemption from act two fifty.
And the owners would make some money.
And the owners would make some money.
I just, I'm not sure how far down this rabbit hole I wanna go. Have we identified any of those owners? Do we do, do we have any idea how much is actually available? To renovate?
Well, we have identified that the one owner who had the um, property on Railroad Street, and I met with him. And he could have probably created about six units. He's still trying to weigh his options. Um, I think what we've just really need to do is take, take like a street-level view. Of of each, you know, sub-neighborhood, and identify properties that might present themselves for renovation.
Or or addition, they could add on to their homes as well.
Or at least give people ideas, that, and they might wanna do it, but once they had the idea of doing it and how to do it.
Yep.
Um, also, have we quantified the need?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there's a big theme.
Well, there's there, there's no place for.
How many?
Well, we have statewide housing study, and we also have census and housing data, so. We have that, and hopefully, we have additional insights from the survey. But yeah, I I think that what we're really trying to do is spark like an incremental approach to improving housing. You will be assigned housing targets, I don't know what those targets are gonna be yet, I don't think they're gonna be incredibly high. Cuz they will be based on the existing population as well.
Yeah, I'm I'm curious to see that. Because it kind of informs your strategy. If we know that we need a thousand units, well, that's probably never gonna happen, a hundred units, hmm, maybe we can do that.
I think we're looking at, on, just just so that.
Twenty units, that we can probably do.
Okay, okay, well, I think your last one was was the the right answer, I mean, I think that's about in the neighborhood that we're looking at. We have two sets of projections, one, one set is on the low end and one is on the high end, and I think. On the low end, we were looking at like twelve units, and on the high end, twenty.
Okay, that's a lot more realistic, then.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's why, when I'm talking about incremental, that's that's why, I mean, we're. We're not turning out hundreds of housing units.
And the the solve the housing problem, twenty ain't even gonna touch it.
It only has to touch it for our town.
Yeah, but I mean, even in our town, it's not gonna touch it.
That's twenty over along a period.
The other thing that you you keep in mind is that. There does seem to be a recurring theme where people want to see reinvestment in existing structures. In Island Pond, so how do you, how do you spark that reinvestment?
Make sure they know where they can get the money to do it.
Ex- exactly, which is why we're having this session. So, uh, those those housing targets are not set in stone yet, but at least. You know, no, nobody's gonna come to you and tell you that you need a thousand housing units.
Double the population of Island Pond overnight.
That would be nice.
I was really worried about that.
You really were, or you just being facetious?
I'm being facetious.
Good.
If we could get, if we could get twelve to twenty additional in a few years, I mean, that would be fine, and then we keep plugging at it and. And then we combine that with our efforts at attracting people and bringing people to Island Pond and, you know.
The thing that always got, it wa- was always told for like downtown revitalization was. Cuz that was my first job, it's it's never that one big thing, it's just plugging away at stuff. It's never one big thing. And I always just to hear like, once our parking lot is built, then we're done. It's like, well, you know, no. Once we build this, then we're done, no, no, it's just incremental. And so I think.
Be incremental in a small town.
Pardon?
I said, it's much safer to be incremental in a small town, big. It's, you know, it's a little bit killed Island Pond years ago, everything was based on Ethan Allen, we were based on one big manufacturing plant, and when it closed. Devastated.
Or the railroad.
You know, you have, you have ten smaller businesses that each have a couple of employees. You, the chances of all ten going out at once are way slimmer.
Well, the same can be said of building housing, if you're building ten two-units or ten four-units. And some of them don't get built for whatever reason, well, then you still have the rest of them, whereas if you're building a single twenty unit.
Block, yeah.
And and it fails, then you don't have all twenty.
Yeah. So, um, I'm kind of champing at the bit to see, get the rest of the surveys and to get this closed. So that we can have a comprehensive report, and I'm thinking that a vision will come from that. But also, I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna, how we're going to do the timing for this. Housing workshop. I would love to do this walking tour. I'm trying to think, I am not, I am not available on October sixth. Which is your next meeting, isn't that right?
Yes.
So I wouldn't be available until the third Monday.
Which is our other meeting.
The third Monday of the month, yeah, you're right.
That'd be the twentieth of October.
Yeah, that's the twentieth.
So then I'm thinking, what if, um, gives us a little bit of time to maybe, um. Come up, you you know, map a couple of target walking routes, but also. Warn a walking meeting for that third week, can we kind of pencil that in? Tentatively?
Like the twentieth, the week of the twen-
Twentieth, and maybe, is it possible to meet in the afternoon?
Yeah, we could change our time for our meeting earlier.
Right.
And still have daylight?
Yeah. Probably a. Lot of people are usually out of work by three thirty, Joel. Would that be a fair, fair statement to say, three thirty?
I think so.
And we'll still have daylight, right?
Yeah.
And and October, that time in October.
I hope it doesn't get that dark.
I probably won't make the meeting the twentieth because I have other co- commitment. I've got a load of food coming in that day.
Well, um, what we could.
Fine, because I have a hard time walking anyway, so I would have a hard time doing it.
Okay, well, how about this, if we did the walking tour, um. Would you still be available for the regular five, at the five o'clock time?
Hopefully.
So, why don't we do this, we do the walking tour at three thirty, and then we reconvene at five o'clock. And we'll just do a quick um, download of what we observed. But then, um, I'll also have a couple of slides for you to consider. From other communities, um, and, you know, doing like the Homes For All incremental approach. So we'll kind of recap what, you know, our findings, and then, you know, see where it takes us. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
And I always find it why I was asking about trying to come up with places to, so pe- so people would know where to borrow the money.
Yeah.
I work for NECA, and I had a party come in the other day asking for that information.
Uh huh.
So I had to scramble around to find it.
Yeah.
Or at least some of it.
Yeah, and do you think somebody from NECA would be interested in being a part of this conversation?
I can ask.
Okay.
Because they do have a housing program. NECA does.
Okay.
Now, when do you want them?
Well, that is, we would have to set the date for our housing.
Okay.
And I think the best time to do that would be after we've done the walkthrough. And then we've, we've met at that meeting, at that, you know, that second Monday. Of October, and then we set a date, and then, uh, then I think that we can set an agenda. And, um, I, when I was writing this scope, I had a couple of people. Who said that they would be interested in serving as panelists, so I can reconnect with them and just confirm their availability. And um, I can also reach out to, uh, maybe I, um, is it Jenna? O'Farrell at NECA?
Yes, yes.
I'll just reach out to her and see if she's available, too.
Yeah, and there's a girl that works for uh. Uh, Rural Edge.
Yeah.
I don't know what her last name is, her first name is Pam, I think she would be very good to reach out to.
Okay.
Uh, she gave me some real good ideas to help this person out.
Uh huh. Okay.
I will get the last name for you and email it to you, or text it to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because they have one program out that the, will give eighty seven dollars towards buying a house.
Yeah.
And one for sixty, one for forty, so.
Okay.
There's a lot of information out there, you know, that I'm sure people don't know.
Right. Absolutely. Um, there's also, there's assistance from USDA Rural Development that a lot of people don't know about. I know that there are still some folks left there. And they've come to some of our events before, so. I think that we could, you know, there are lots of possibilities, I could think, I would think that we could get, you know, about. Four or five people, the other person that I had spoken to in advance was, um, somebody from the Northern Forest Center. To talk about what they did to create market-rate housing in St. John'sbury, and their experiences on that.
They did that Lancaster, too.
Yep.
And how did it work out?
Well, it's fully tenanted, it, the one, the one on Railroad Street looks fantastic. It wasn't cheap.
I can send you, I can, oh, yeah, they they put big money behind their project, cuz the one in Lancaster did it, too.
Yeah.
When you know you're walking to her, you're gonna take, uh, like, uh, movie pictures of you walking through the. To, uh, so we can. Present it to people if they ask or.
I'm not wearing a GoPro.
Pardon?
I'm not wearing a GoPro.
I think just.
Bright and red has one, we can put one on you, Joel.
I think just using photos would be fine, because then we've al- also have like orthos. Um, that we can use for follow-up as well. What I don't wanna do is identify somebody's property and just say, you know. Doesn't this property look awful, and we wanna fix it up, and we don't talk to that person, and.
Let's not do that, they did that when we had.
This is not about shaming here, this is, this is about opportunity.
So we had, we had the um, landworks planned done. They came in and they presented this, put this all the stuff up on screen, it was all these ginormous four-story buildings, they were building on people's properties downtown. Never bothered to mention to these people, they were basically wiping out their building and building this four-story building on it, that.
Yeah.
Everybody went crazy at the meeting, and it's like, there's no developer building this, so don't, don't get too wound up, but. The consultant did, they threw that out there to everybody at the.
Geez, that was ugly.
I would, I would say.
Yeah.
I wouldn't.
So the things that we would want to look for.
Yes, it was.
The things that we would want to look for are vacant lots next to existing structures. Even if they are part of, um, the parcel that has the structure. We would also want to look for houses on deep or, um. Unusually configured lots, where you have additional space so that perhaps an accessory. Dwelling unit could be added in a way. That complements the, the streetscape. Um, but, and again, we're just doing this as examples and we're not saying. Hey, um, you over there on Railroad Street, this is what we're doing with your property. These are examples and then we would illustrate them with. Hypothetical sketches that are not necessarily um, site specific. But like in our presentation, we would say something like, you know, we noticed that we have deep lots. In this particular neighborhood. Here's an example of some infill that we think could work for Island Pond. We've also noticed however, that we have um, some zoning provisions that keep this from happening. You know, that's, that's the kind of thing.
It's exactly the example I happen to bring with me.
Which is?
This is my favorite undeveloped lot. So it's, there's a fairly good strip of flat, fairly level land. It's in an area that has water and sewer and power. One of these, one of these plats is, I'm told, wrong, but there is an opening to the, to Derby Street. But. It is slightly less than five acres and therefore cannot be a planned residential development according to the code. Also, according to the code, you need a fifty-foot internal road. And there's only about eighty feet of space to work with, so once you take fifty-foot road in, you're left with a teeny tiny. Um, amount to work with, maybe tiny homes would fit. But you'd have to come up with um, a whole bunch of variances to make that work. But what's also interesting about this is the boundary lines of the property are, are fairly large. But the usable part of the property is very small. And I'm finding this in a few other places that I've kind of been eyeballing. You've got a spaghetti lot that is super deep. But the front part is all that's usable, the back part, um, on the other side of Derby, there's a bunch of these, the back part is in the marsh. Or the back part is up a hill. So my thought was to take the parcel data from the state. And do a mashup with a topographic map. And maybe all of the building outlines of things that already exist. Because if you cross-reference enough data, you will find that available land is not the same as buildable land.
Right.
And then you can focus your efforts on things that are actually practical. I've also seen a few things that appear to be actual empty lots that. Are somebody's double yard today? So you're back to that other problem of convincing the landowner that they should develop that space. But it's, it, there's not as much to work with as it seems.
Mm-hmm.
It's kind of the bottom line.
Mm-hmm. No, I, I think what we, we can also run, we can run maps that show development constraints, wetlands. Et cetera, and we've got parcels, so we, we can do that too, so um.
It's kind of interesting though, once you dig into it.
Yeah.
Now, if we saw a big parcel of land that was owned by somebody and they weren't doing nothing with it. Uh, would we pu- would we present ourselves to them? And tell them this is what you could do, this is where you could get the money if you wanted to. So they could, it would give them a chance to build a uh. A multi-housing unit on it.
The really big parcels are all on the highway across from Maple Syrup Factory. Hundreds of acres.
And who they belong to.
Various people own them.
Conti owns quite a bit of it too.
So I think if the town wanted to take a proactive approach. I don't know, Allison, you know more about this than I do. There are towns that form organizations that can register their, their organization as a developer. In various ways to do it, I'm not sure exactly how, but the towns can. We, I, I think our practice would be to lay the groundwork. And hopefully that, that we'd become more attractive if we make these changes. But I don't know how much we would wanna push all this, that's another question.
Well, the, uh, you also have an opportunity to form like a community land trust.
Right.
Like the one that was formed in Albany and Craftsbury. And Glover in Greensboro and they're just, they're looking for. An opportunity for a, a property that they wanna rehab that's near one of those village centers. So they're kind of being proactive in that way and hopeful, they're hoping to set an example. So when one of, when some property comes available, that they would acquire it, rehab it. And develop in an, in a way that work, uh, of a scale that works for that community. And, and then, you know, get the buy-in that way.
And I think I read in a paper where Lindenville's industrial park, uh, they were looking. Where they, they haven't developed that part of the industrial park, they're looking at now doing housing there, whi- which. And that, and the land belongs to Lindenville. So that, it was quite an article in the paper about that.
There was somebody who was interested.
Lot of towns have these industrial parks and a lot of them have been successful and a lot of them have been flops.
Uh huh.
Empty buildings. So what do you do now? Do you, you have these empty buildings? Is that something that the? You know, if we had the same scenario here, would that, would that be something that we could uh, revitalize and, and, and. At- attract a builder to come in and say, look, we'll give you uh, so many years of uh. Tax breaks, if you think you can develop this and make a, make, make housing here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, everything takes money, I mean, you, you gotta find the right people and. You know, thi- this, this, these, this lot here is a fairly good sized lot, but now you're looking at people that are probably retirement age. Uh, you know, they don't, they don't have those kind of investments uh, to be able to do something like that. It, it, it's, it would take a younger person in their thirties and late thirties and early forties to, to, to wanna. Develop their, their property to, to spend that kind of money and. You know, thi- this isn't like it was in the eight, uh, set the seventies and eighties and nineties, uh. Uh, pe- pe- people are kind of hanging on to what they got because they're struggling.
And, and that's sort of the recurring theme that I see is, there's a lot of land, but people already own it. And so you have to entice them to do something.
Yeah.
The Lindenville case, completely different, the town already owned the land, they could make a decision and move forward. We don't have that luxury.
No. Be nice if we did.
You also pointed out though, that there are a lot of regulatory barriers right there, so I mean. The, the, the low hanging fruit is to make sure that the zoning isn't getting in the way.
And the, the zoning is definitely, you know, assuming this landowner came in here right now and said, I wanna develop it. Or I wanna sell it to somebody who will develop it, you could fit some housing in there. Great, now we have to tear up, you know, section two seventeen, or section three seventeen of our zoning code. Because there's, there's no way, it's, it's definitely not possible to develop this as NR. Or R.
What you would wanna do away with the fifty-foot requirement for a fifty-foot right-of-way, is that what the problem is?
It, you'd have to figure something out that fit the space and it would be a one-off. And that's something that I've, I've noted as I read through our zoning code, is there's a lot of things. I, I don't wanna say that our zoning code could be five times the size.
It could be easily.
Um, but I've, I've studied a lot of people's zoning codes in the places that I've lived. And some of them, um, like street standards. There's different widths for different kinds of streets. Um, some of them, there's driveway standards, your driveway has to be big enough to turn around a fire truck. Uh, some of them have slope standards, if your, if your incline is this much, then you have to do this much engineering to be able to build a house on it. We don't have any of that. So we have, we have very rigid definitions of how the land can be used. But we have no engineering specifications.
But would some of that come and play with um, subdivision regulations?
Absolutely, and um, so.
Because that's kind of what this would be then, this would be more like a subdivision, yes.
So on the seventh, on the seventh, we're hosting um, a webinar. And with um, our, our guest panelist is gonna be Dan Malik, who is kind of the com- complete streets guy. Um, when it comes to um, su- subdivision, s- um, specifications. Um, public realm, walkability, um, anyhow. Most of our communities don't have subdivision regs. And they think they do because it comes, you know, because they look at subprov- sub- subdivisions under site plan review and they just look at the shape of the lot. And the driveway access and then they think we're done. But most communities don't, so that's gonna be the point of this uh, webinar that we're doing on the seventh. But he's going to get a little more into detail on the public realm specifications. For laying out walkability in streets and access.
And I do have to take exception, James, we do have a number of policies, we have a, an extensive driveway access policy. We do control a lot of highway right-of-way.
There is, there is a separate, it's not part of the zone.
It's not part of the zoning code, okay, that's why I didn't see it.
Yeah.
Where can I find that? Cause I, I want to.
We can ask Theresa for a copy of it.
I don't wanna say, I wanna know more, but yeah, here we are, so.
Cause we do have a driveway permit and it has all the.
Yep.
Policy and regulation.
Driveway permit is mentioned in passing in the rest of the zoning code, it's like, yeah, you have to get a driveway permit, but it doesn't say anything about.
Has their own for Route one oh five, you know, so they have their own regs.
Right, we can only control that on town highways.
That's right.
So what's the location of this lot? Is this like a document that you can share with me?
Up, it looks like it's up next to the.
Next to the ball field.
It's next to the ball field. You look on the map?
Yeah, it's, it's conveniently next to the ball field, such that if you.
How big a lot is this? Five acres.
Well, it's like four point eight seven. And.
So it's right behind the ball.
Goes up a hill, so on this, where this, where this tree line is, that's where it goes up a hill. But the rest of it's flat. It's, it's long and skinny, it, you know, if it, if it fronted the street, it would be a spaghetti lot.
Uh huh.
So what's the problem with, are you saying it can't be built on or something?
It, it can't be built within the constraints of the codes we have.
Why? You could build a house, you can't build.
Yeah, you might be able to build a house, because um, well, lot size.
I thought you only needed an acre to per lot.
Huh?
I thought it was only an acre to build a house on residential.
I didn't print the rest of it out.
It's that, yeah, there's, like.
If that lot uh, is, has road frontage. Then whatever the, whatever the zone is in the, where it has road frontage is what the zone is for the entire lot, even if there's a division in the back.
Yeah, but that would not be the most, um, that would not be the most efficient or most productive use, is what I'm also suggesting. Like, yes, you could, um, if you were to build conventional and.
Yeah.
Bend the rules a little bit on the lot size, you could put two houses.
This lot here, cause this is the.
But if you.
Yeah.
Put in a, if you put in a, a front street along the whole length of it.
Yeah.
You could build very, very small houses. I figure you could get eight or ten cottages on this thing.
That's where, uh.
And still have a fifty-foot road.
Lives up the top, you can read it as.
Be a little tight, but that would be eight or ten little units.
Are you talking rentals?
Yeah, the cemetery. Yeah, I, I mean, I know where it's at.
Or, or they would. Division, it would be some kind of rental thing.
Something.
Or condos or something.
Yeah, could you do condominium style homes?
You're further assuming that the people who already live in these lots fronting Derby would like to have that in their backyard. And that they wouldn't, that they wouldn't pitch a fit.
I, I can guess it won't.
Yeah.
Since I know Island Pond pretty well.
Yeah. So like a, 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 any, probably a two-story structure would be just out of the question, because you'd be looking down into their backyard.
I mean, the so, the way the zoning law will be changed is somebody could put up to, what is it, put up to five per acre. Five dwellings per acre.
The, under um, the Home Act, the minimum allowable density. Um, for areas that are served by water and sewer is now five units an acre. Moreover, um, multi-units, um, is it for, up to four units. Are considered a permitted use by right, so they're, they're not approved conditionally. And also, people who um, under conditional use review. Um, interested parties who um, form, you know, who articulate. Concerns about the character of the area, they cannot, um, they cannot object. To affordable housing of citing con- um, concerns about the character of the area. So it effectively shuts down NIMBY.
No, that's interesting, cause that's, that's exactly where most of these things fail.
Yeah, and um, that was another change with the Home Act. So um, the other thing is that interested parties now are twenty persons, not ten. So the bar is, is higher.
Yeah, and there's, there's not. I mean, you would need four people per house to get to that.
The other thing is that duplexes are treated exactly the way single-family homes are treated. And they um, it, they can't um, have requirements for additional space. Or additional dimensional standards, so they would, if, they would be treated the, the same way, so you could get more housing. On that lot just by that right alone. Like even a couple of duplexes.
I, I think we pretty much allow duplexes everywhere we allow.
You, you do, you do, um, the. Except for the shoreline.
Yeah, maybe.
Um, but basically, when, I guess you can increase dimensional standards if you're looking at a series of. Duplexes, they would be treated like the same as single-family homes.
How do you deal with the septic for that in areas where there's no town sewer? Oh, this has to be in, this only applies in areas where there's town water and sewer.
Well, for um, the minimum density requirements and the up to four units. Considered permitted by right are served by water and sewer. Um, duplexes, wherever you allow single-family homes, it's assumed that you can also cite. A duplex as well. So maybe they put in a mound or something, but it's not your problem.
What about extending the sewer system? Yeah.
No, no, it just hasn't.
Just to go around the lake, it would take about five pumping stations.
Uh, just, uh, as a.
And a mound, couple mounds.
Let's, let's say that one of the landowners along the highway. By the Maple Syrup Factory decided to sell their parcel or make it available. One of them's, one of them's like three hundred acres, I mean, there's, there's big, big parcels.
Yeah.
But if you built a whole another, you, you basically subdivide it and you give it its own sewer treatment plan.
I mean, like, down by us, the, the, the developer would be responsible for that cost.
Cause um, containerized sewage treatment plants exist. There are, there are several vendors.
Yeah.
We would probably, to do that way out there, we'd have to run the line which stops on Pleasant Street. All the way out Pleasant Street, all the way out Lake Shore Drive, and then, you know, out. Past, you know, out past the one oh five to get there. I don't, I mean, if we did that to serve that, it would have to be done at their expense, not ours.
Right. I'm saying a, a containerized plant might be cheaper.
That would be up to the developer, though. It's their project.
But wouldn't the new chip program be an incentive for those developers in that case? Cause it, I, I know that the details are still being worked out, but it's kind of like a statewide. Tiff, just for water and sewer.
I actually saw one of these once, now that I think about it, uh, just outside of Boulder Creek in Santa Cruz Mountains. Somebody built, there is a full-blown. Regular subdivision, tiki-tacky tract housing, streets, streetlights. The whole nine yards, and it has its own wastewater treatment plant. And it's surrounded on all sides by forest because nothing else got developed, so I don't know how that, how it got built.
The company that we deal with, H two O, actually told us late in our process, oh, by the way. You can just buy a whole wastewater treatment plant already built and drop it in here. Yeah, by the time we had a whole other project designed, so. But yes, those things exist.
I didn't know you guys worked with H two O as well. Yeah, there are towns as well.
That's probably all beyond the scale of, you know, that, that's more than twenty units of housing.
We're gonna be so good at this, our, our town plan is going to spur such development, it will be, will be set.
I'm very excited about this, so.
Then we can be the consultants.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put this on the, on the agenda for the six. It was the, what date is it? The twentieth, and so I'll be up there, I'll try to be up there early. We'll do a walk around, then recon, and then we will start. Our regular meeting at.
So we'll meet here?
Five, we can start here and then, yeah, and then we will reconvene and at the time for. Your regular meeting and start sharing ideas.
I will not be here for the walk around, I'll be there for the meeting. I said, I won't be here for the walk around, I'll be on, I'll be there, be online for the meeting, but I won't be here for the walk around.
Okay, Joe, will you be there for the walk around?
Uh, I'm gonna have Billy Hawkins carry a laptop around with my virtually, no, I'm just. I can be there.
Okay.
I will say, add, add the properties on South Street should be looked at as part of that.
Okay.
Cause they are owned by Bucky Tardif in town, so. He would be open to development ideas, he's all about development. On the hill. Down below you, where the Victorian used to be, there's two houses that were torn down, and so they're vacant lots up there.
Awesome.
And there's another one that should be torn down.
Well, there is, there is a development house behind, that's across the street behind your house.
Yes.
That has been vacant, it's, you know, it's gonna be going up for a tax sale at some point, I mean, it's been up for tax sale three times, nobody bought it.
The Marston House?
Yeah.
Oh.
Where is that?
I want that.
It's, it's right across from there, it's on South Street as well. It has, it has a garage that the roof is paved in on, but the. The property isn't terrible, I mean, it, it used to be a rental before Betty, or not Betty. Oh, what was her sister's name? Pauline, she was, she was killed in a car accident.
And now the kids own it.
And the kids own it, and they don't live here, they live in Connecticut, and they, they're kind of a troubled family. And so they have done nothing with it since she passed away, but it used to be two or three apartments that she had in there.
Do, I think.
Okay.
And it was decent, I, I was in that house years ago, cause I used to have the house in front of it, that now James owns. And so it wasn't a terrible house, I don't know what shape it's in now, but.
Here's a weird question. If, if a lot goes to tax sale, does it have to go all the way to tax sale?
Well.
Or is there a way for the town to take it and keep it and use it?
Joe and I had this discussion about, especially that house, because it was not one that anybody would buy at tax sale. It's been up three times and nobody buys. And it's getting to a point now where the, the amount of taxes and backwater that is due on that property is gonna make it. Not that attractive at a tax sale, because people don't wanna, you know, they have to pay at least what's owed on it, and.
Yeah, and that's part of some money.
So, you know, if the town took it over, we don't really have to pay ourselves, so, yeah.
We take on, also we take on any liability, which I don't know if there's, but we would want to look into that before we acquired it, but.
Yes, yes.
But can the town take it over?
What?
Can the town take it over?
Right, at the tax sale, we would, the town would, would acquire.
And then we would be in a position to develop it then.
After a year.
Yeah.
After a year?
Yeah, there's a year, there's a year redemption period on any property that goes to tax sale.
But then that somebody has to actually do that, somebody has to, you know, manage the property and maintain the property now, and. It's not always, it's not always the best idea to acquire property just because nobody else wants it, but.
Sometimes it might be the cheapest idea.
It might be in a way, I mean, it, it is a possibility for a way to entice a developer, because if the town. Was able to secure some grants to stabilize anything that's wrong with it, you know, that a private developer isn't gonna get. Grants for most of that stuff, they're gonna have a loan.
They can, they can get a lot of luck for grants. As long as you're fixing up for a payment to.
Right.
Run out, you can get a lot of grants for it.
I mean, wouldn't they still qualify for V H A P?
Probably, but towns qualify for lots of free money that. Developers don't, might not qualify for, it's like a nonprofit. You, you qualify for a, a different level of grant money without as many strings.
It might qualify for HUD too.
I would just think that it could be, I mean, if, it might be easier for, well. It might be easier just to entice a private developer, I mean, in that. You would be saddled with owning housing.
Yeah, we don't want to.
Might be advisable to take and figure out how to reduce. Amount of load on it, you know, we're not getting anything anyway, you know, and.
So it's gone up for tax sale three times.
Yep, no bidders.
I would have bid.
Too much owed on it.
It's got, it's got a hefty, you know, tax of, you know, tax bill that's owed on that now, cause it's, they have, they, they were already two years behind at that point. So you're, you're looking at a pretty sizable tax bill that's out there.
I mean, if the town could buy it and turn it over in a, you know, two years. You know, it's just that.
Right, and then, and then maybe what we'd have to do is we would, we acquire it and we just hold it for that year where they could redeem it. And at the end of that year, then we can sell it off to somebody, it'll be free and clear, and we can take what we got for it.
Oh, I see, so if, if you buy it at tax sale. And then the taxes are all cleared after a year, got it?
Right, right, the property becomes sellable after a year, it's not, you don't own, have clear title to it. Until after that year is up, because people can, so if your property gets sold at tax sale. You have a year to go back and redeem it, you go in, you pay the, the, the taxes off, you pay the penalty and you get the house back. So that's why nobody can develop that property during that year, because they don't have clear titles.
Right.
And so somebody's gonna plunk out twenty or thirty thousand dollars to clear the back taxes on that. It's a long time to sit with no, no return on that. Yeah, you're gonna own the property after a year, but. It's a long time to tie up that amount of money.
Except, James, you might wanna buy it.
Continuous property owner.
I heard him say it.
You'd be patient and wait a, wait a year or so and, and then develop it the way you see fit.
I would do something with it. So along similar lines, this is. So across South Street from that is that new build that's Bean.
Yeah.
It's been for sale for over a year.
I know, I don't know what he's doing.
So either, you know, so what, there's. There's probably something. To know about that.
Christ, I thought he had a buyer for that.
Is, is his price too high? Does the market not support it? Because, you know, for all, for all the housing shortage. Well, that's a house, and it's empty.
Part of it, it's not advertised, it's not, it's not listed with a Realtor, all he's got is a little for sale sign on it, and he's got nothing online or anywhere that shows you. Well, how much is it? Is it something I would even call about? I mean, it.
Who owns that?
Mark Bean.
Three hundred K, I know that.
Mark Bean as if, like, like Linden Bean Homes? Okay.
He has, he has two ginormous houses up here.
Okay.
On the lake.
Yeah, it was. I remember the property went up for sale, there was a for sale sign on it, and before I could make a phone call, for sale sign was, it was literally for sale for like four days.
Wow.
He, he was, I don't know what he was hooked into or how he knew about it, but he did, he bought it. And I believe that house is a retired model, which means that. Except for the labor, the whole thing is fully, you know, basically fully depreciated already, so he doesn't. He doesn't necessarily care if he sells it ever, as evidenced by, you know, the fact that he won't list it.
It's a tax write-off.
Yeah, so it's, it's already.
For his business.
It's like free money for him, he doesn't care.
Yeah, it's tax write-off for his business because it's advertisement, but the house is and.
I mean, I, I toured it and everything, you know, it's. Proper, proper full basement.
Yeah, nice.
All copper heating loops, I mean, it's.
Nice job done.
Yeah. And it just sits there.
In that lot, it's probably actually been enough so you can put another house there.
Not that one.
Not, not the, yeah, not.
Not unless you're going over the bank, the railroad tracks.
Well, the, the lot next to it, going that direction, ha- has a platted street. It never got built, so.
Now, the street got taken out many years ago.
It used to be. Whatever it is.
Yeah, it used to go right down across the railroad tracks and.
That's the property I wanted to put on the list of ones to look at, because that's the one that, that Bucky owns all that.
He owns two places in there.
Yeah.
Are we talking about Harlan Cales Road?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can I share a graphic with you all?
Towards Maple, I think.
Am I able to share?
You should be, you did before.
Okay, yeah, so let me see, how do I do this? When I was talking about the Homes for All Toolkit, I just, I'm gonna send this out afterwards, but. What I think is really interesting, there are also, there are shorter versions of this and there are slides, but this is actually. A, a comprehensive guidebook for a small-scale developer.
Yeah, look at that.
Kind of takes you through the whole steps of assessing, like, what's gonna work, you know, for you and in a certain place. But they come up with these, these really cool, what they call typologies, like housing types. And then they provide illustrations, and so what's helpful. If you look at some of these illustrations, as you're walking. Through a community where you see opportunities for redevelopment, like the telescoping home. For like a, a big lot, or like aside, this, and, and you've seen, we've all seen some of these before. Let me see if I can keep, okay, so here's, here's an example, so like this is the age and place, this is your, you know, I gave in. To fit, fitting in a tight lot, it's a one-bedroom. A, a small footprint, that's what it looks like, at least in theory, if you like, for some of the illustrations. There's an example in Montpelier, here's the potential layout. Then we've got, which, what is this?
Almost like the, the houses that Vermont was ma- building.
Yeah, well, and the thing is, they're, they all, you know. They fit in with the character of most Vermont communities, like. When you see these, these basics, you've seen them before. Uh, but here's another, it's an ancient place, single unit, it's got one bedroom. It's also a pretty small footprint, I think it's fourteen feet wide, it's kind of like a deep unit for a deep lot. And there's a, there's a how, there's a layout. This one is just for like adding onto a garage, like a, like a, like an A D U. And it's really cool that they have these actual blueprints, but here's some more examples of building on a narrow lot. Um, this one actually has, I think, four, you know, like four units. And then here's one for a shallow lot. So, uh, you know, I'll, I'll send these out and just kind of think about it. I would just start with the housing typologies, but there's a lot of other stuff that could be. Could be helpful, like when we're, when we're looking at specific properties. In, in Island Pond. And what's helpful, I think, here is that when we're communicating what the vision is, rather than. Taking somebody's lot, like what they did with Land Works and just coming up with like some, you know, four-story structure. Uh, and then somebody goes, what, you're doing what on my property? No, it's more of, just like, this is the kind of stuff that we think. That we could make this work in, in our downtown. Um, if we, you know, tweaked the, the zoning. Cause some of these would need some zoning tweaks, because they're pretty much built on zero lot line development, but. You know, just a thought, so I'll send that link out right after the meeting.
In the seventies, they built four houses in Island Pond as more or less like spec houses. Oxer built them. If you, if you was, remember Oxer.
I'm home.
Pardon?
Long time ago.
He got in trouble with the governor at the time. He was the head of neck, that's a whole other story, never mind, go ahead.
Mine was one of them, the house down behind me was one, and then there's two up on Fitzgerald Avenue. That were built by Oxer.
Okay. Will we see those on the, on the walking tour?
If you go on them, them streets, you would.
What streets are those?
Uh, Fitzgerald Avenue is two, which one of them is Tim Curry's house. And the other one is Brandon. Castoni's house. And then there's Ken Glonis's and mine.
And yours is one as well?
Yep.
And you're on what street?
Mountain Street.
Mountain Street.
It's all is a twenty-four by forty ranch. Full basement.
So I, I guess, if we're, we're all set with you, Allison, now, so we'll, we'll then meet on that twentieth of the month.
Yeah, yeah.
And in the meantime, Mike will try to get some of the written paperwork that was left at the post office. And not post office, but the library and.
I'll send you the ones that were up here, and I'll check with the library and see if they have, it's down there.
Yeah, I mean, anything that you can find, even if you send it in dribs and drabs, I'd rather do that than. You know, try to get a head start on it so that we're. So that we're, you know, we're done. And, you know, we can start compiling a report, a final report as soon as possible. That would be super helpful.
Yep. Um. So I guess before we're all set, we'll, we'll go to the next thing, uh, Allison.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Uh, the next thing on, on the agenda is a zoning administrator, but. I have not, I have no correspondence from him, Jo- Joel, do you have anything?
Uh, he wrote me about a couple things, or I was asked about a couple things, but I haven't, I. Send him what I thought and, um, haven't heard from him, so I assume he's, was okay with it, so. I, I don't know of any issues that he's facing right now that I, that we haven't resolved.
Um. So, but that's it for that, and, uh, you know, I said, still, he's been here now for a while, we still haven't met this guy. I mean, wh- wh- when, when is he gonna attend one of our meetings?
He's usually working when you have your meetings or coming, leaving his, I think he said. I forget how he put it, but I think it's, he's either at work or leaving work, and just couldn't usually make it up here in time from Concord.
We change our time sometimes just to get where we can meet him. Well, a little later in the evening.
W- we could try to have him, maybe he'd be interested in having a walk-around, no, no, that's gonna be in the afternoon, he probably wouldn't make it. I don't know, we can see if he's available to somehow set up something special so that you guys could get together a little bit.
Yeah, I guess my next question is, it, it does. Does he ever come up at all to take a, a rider, a ride about, to, to see what's going on in the community and people who might be building without permits? Or, I mean, does he, does he do any of that, Joel? Do we have to call him and tell him, well, this is what's going on, you need to come up here?
We've r- rarely had a zoning administrator that goes around to check whether there's anything illegal going on, that was, that was Annie's job. Annie always wanted to know that, I mean, if you, if the zoning administrator is notified of something. But if you wanna pay, if you wanna have a zoning administrator, go around and make sure on a regular basis, you're gonna have to raise the salary. Because that's not just built into what he does now, mostly what he would be coming up here to do would be to look at the permits. Check the property out and, you know, go from there.
Um, yep.
Yeah, but does he ever come to town, do you know?
I do not know if, it would be a question whether he's charged mileage, I don't track his mileage, he's not my employee. But if he's coming up here, whether he charges mileage, I don't know whether. Don't know how he's doing the job, but apparently it's getting done. So unless you have somebody else that would like to be zoning administrator, we're just kind of stuck.
Yeah, no, I understand.
I applied twice. I can wait.
Yep. Um, I guess enough said on that, uh, how about, uh, we're gonna approve minutes of the previous mini, meeting? Do you have anybody to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Any seconds?
I'll second it.
All, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And the last thing here is other business before we adjourn, is there any other business?
And nothing.
Uh, you make a mo- what's that, Joel?
I got nothing.
Okay.
Taco Bell.
So, I am having a motion, uh, that, uh, we adjourn?
I'll make the motion with adjourn.
I'll second it.
All approve, all approve. Say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night.